Location or moment of silence? If not, but you will I jump on? Location or moment of silence? You there, Mac?
Yeah, you broke up there at the end.
Yeah, go ahead and proceed with the invocation. Let's let's start the meeting.
Absolutely. Heavenly Father, we're thankful for this opportunity to be gathered here today as county staff and county representative. To work out the business of the county to administer those policies and procedures that not only elected officials have been elected to do, but also the administration of the county businesses and functions for San Juan County. We're thankful, Heavenly Father, and appreciate all those first responders and their willingness to take care of the citizens of this great county and this great nation. Please bless them as they go about protecting and offering voluntary services throughout our county and in our behalf. We ask a special blessing on those that are infected with COVID in our county and throughout the nation that they may be healed and protected and that their families may be taken care of. We also pray, Heavenly Father, for the strength and the citizenry to hold together in this great community at this time. That we may learn and strengthen through all the hardships that we face. Please recognize, Heavenly Father, that there are those in this county that we have the blessings we given towards them. That in those times of need, they may turn to the need and receive those blessings. And that we're looking forward, Heavenly Father, for this great nation that we live in and that we are a part of. We say these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ.
Thank you very much, Mac, and also welcome those of you that if the come on on stream line or live or phone. Welcome to our meeting and we're very sorry that we're going through some issues and problems and and some concerns of where we cannot come together as individuals to have our meeting, but nevertheless, the meeting and the proceeding must continue. So we had our invocation. Thank you very much. And number two, Mac, could you try to do the public comment and so on?
Absolutely. So the public comment, this is kind of going to be new for us, a new opportunity where we opened up the meeting for public comments, recognizing not only the need for that and the desire for public participation, but understand that we are online, we are live, which presents a little bit more of a difficult challenge for us here as staff. So recognizing that fact, please keep your public comments to three minutes apiece. When you do make public comment, please first introduce your name and your address so that we have that on the record. And well, there's obviously no sign in sheet, so we won't be able to announce you, so please be respectful and mindful of each other. And take turns as we go through this public comment, one person speak at a time. And we'll proceed from there. Just do know we'll be timing you internally here on those three minutes. And I'll mute you if we reach that three minute mark and you continue to go over. I'll try to make a, I'll try to let you listen to the sound on my timer. You may not be able to hear it. Just try to keep it minimal at best. And then if you've already given your public comments, used your three minutes, that's your opportunity. Only those three minutes. And so we're not asking you to take multiple turns. Also, if you're not speaking, keep yourself on mute. We get a lot of background noise on here. Not not only from just us, but also you as well. So keep yourself on mute because you're ready to speak. And then we'll just kind of proceed from there. As always, just be respectful in your comments. If things do get out of hand, we do have that right to mute you or kick you out of the meeting. We don't want to do that. But just be respectful in your comments. Other than that, I'll turn the time over, Commissioner, to public comments. So anybody wanted to?
Any of you commissioners would like to make a comment?
I want to make a comment.
Sheila Canaveral wants to make a comment.
Martine Huckabee wants to make a comment.
Okay, Sheila, go ahead.
Yesterday, I sent a letter to the county commissioners, to the county administrator and to our county attorney, reminding them that the November 2019 Spanish Valley ordinance requires that a development agreement be entered into between SITLA and San Juan County. And so I was, well, I'll keep reading. As you know, a development agreement imposes significant legal obligations on the county and thereby its taxpayers. For that reason, I formally request that the county attorney prepare or be directed to prepare a straightforward, simple outline to the county commissioners and to the taxpayers before a vote is taken on any matter related to the SITLA proposal. A 5,000 acre proposal is of enormous consequence and must be approached carefully, transparently, and with full comprehension of potential water provision obligations, financial obligations and legal liability for the county and its taxpayers. One of the concerns that I have is that I hope that the county attorney will advise the commission on exactly what, and the public, the cost sharing on infrastructure provision is. Also, there's been much talk about encouraging Spanish Valley to incorporate. And if that's the case, I would encourage that there be a provision in there so that a future city is not settled with a development agreement that's entered into now. So some sort of term on the development agreement could be imposed. I just again would urge this to be taken carefully because San Juan has been through legal nightmares, which have decimated our budget in the past, and we don't need to go through that again. Thank you.
Okay, next person wanting to make a comment.
I'll make it if no one is coming forward.
Go ahead.
This is Martine Huckabee. I live on Sunny Lake Lane in San Juan. Water use in Spanish Valley is always an issue and to develop 5,000 acres is a concern for me and many others. I hope you will consider that when you vote. Thank you for all the work that you do and stay well. My blessing. Thank you.
Thank you, Martine. Next person. Some of you may have to star sticks if you're having a difficulty in muting yourself and so. Just know that. Looking for anybody else who'd have a comment.
I'd like to comment.
Go ahead.
My name is Dave Early. I'm a resident of Grand County. I've been involved with the Moab Area Watershed Partnership since its beginning. I'm a founding member. I was mayor of Castle Valley for eight years and worked on water. Um, I am commenting on item J. I agree with the first speaker wholeheartedly. Secondly, I have an issue of science from April 17th, 2020 in front of me with an article on large contribution of anthropogenic warming to emerging a North American mega drought. What that really means is what did climate change contribute to our current drought? This paper comes up with 30%, which is an interesting thing moving forward. But there's a little sub note in this paper on page four, and I'm going to send this paper to the council. And it says, "The 2018 drought was preceded by the wettest 19-year period in at least 1,200 years." This was done by tree rings. So most of us today, myself included, as decision makers grew up in our formulative years, were in that 1980 to 2000. My point here is that that is completely an abnormality water wise. Bruce, you should be very concerned about that out on your grazing allotments. And that really, we are in a drought period. So to tie all 5,000 acres into one unit without basing development in Spanish Valley on water availability is going to condemn our valley, Spanish Valley Moab, to water wars forever. SITLA will believe they have the right. They have the state behind them trying to push this. There are 2017 junior water right competing with an 1890 and an 1896 water right, the Moab Irrigation Company in the city of Moab. This is ludicrous. So please, counsel, again, get it to your attorney, see what you're agreeing to, and really figure out the water and who's going to pay for it. Mark Stilson has told me we're just going to go to the Colorado River and get it. Well, if I'm Navajo or Native American, that's theft of the Native American water rights. And you will never see your water if the St. George Pipeline and things like this are continued to allow allowed to happen in Utah. All right. Thank you very much. And hopefully we'll make a pragmatic decision on this and base it on reality and not just 5,000 acres. Thank you.
Got a request from a, can you unmute yourself? That's star six.
This is Carolyn Daly. I'll go next if no one else wants to.
Go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners and county staff. We all know it's inevitable that SITLA will be developing its land in Spanish Valley. But my position all along has been that their development needs to be controlled by the county for the protection of its citizens. Let me remind you that we already are having problems with SITLA in our area. SITLA has shown disregard for the public welfare by continuing to pursue selling their land for a love's truck stop despite the concerted effort of public protest. And in Moab, the line that they, the Utah, the, excuse me, the Utah Court of Appeals ruled that they use their power and influence to pressure the city of Moab to approve a building permit for significant expansion of the project without the public due process required by the law. And this decision was recently upheld by the Supreme Court, Utah Supreme Court. I think it's naive to give SITLA a carte blanche to begin developing all of their land anywhere at any time and that bind the county in this agreement. SITLA says they are merrily following the new ordinances, but I think they are taking advantage of them. The approval process in the new plan, community ordinance, was intended for individual development projects and not a sweeping zoning chain. If approved now, this will eliminate the county's future ability to negotiate with SITLA on the provision of services like schools and fire and police protection to the over 14,000 people they plan to have living there. This application also contradicts the Spanish Valley area plan, which very clearly describes development proceeding and phases over the next 50 years. How can we decide now what will happen in 50 years? We do not know about availability of water or the needs of residents then. I am asking the commissioners to do the right thing, not only for those of us who make our homes in Spanish Valley now, but for our children and grandchildren, who we want to, who we want to keep Spanish Valley as their home for future generations. Please deny SITLA's application and instead require them to resubmit their zoning requests for a phased approach of development. Approving it all at once is of no benefit to the county and I think will prove to be a grave mistake. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Spanish Valley residents really need your support today. Thank you.
Ms. Monette Clark, I'd like to speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. My name's Monette Clark. I live in Spanish Valley. Today, your agenda has an action item related to SITLA and 5,000 acres in Spanish Valley. It is number 5J on your agenda. SITLA's application is for a PC zone designation. These 5,000 acres are all the open land in Spanish Valley. So item 5J is a big deal for San Juan County because of Spanish Valley's economic importance. Please table this item today and request county attorney Kendall Laws to provide you with a written legal opinion as to what this PC zone application, if granted, would mean to the county's liabilities. The county may be on the line to provide large capital expenditures in the future, such as more water in the form of a new water well, creation of parks, recreation, healthcare, solid waste facilities and more. You need time to consider the vested rights issue. I believe chapter two, PC district of Spanish Valley Land Use Ordinance, has a mistake. Vested rights should not be granted at stage one, which is where SITLA is right now with their PC zone application. Vested rights should be negotiated at stage three, the development agreement between the county and the developer for a specific project of, say, 200 acres, not for 5,000 acres. SITLA's preliminary community structure plan, which is provided along with the PC zone application, is really their own master plan for their own land. This is their long-term vision and I'm glad they have it. But the vested rights mistake in the ordinance has to be corrected before you take any vote. This will require a public hearing. Fortunately, there is no time pressure on SITLA's application. After all, it deals with the timescope of the Spanish Valley master plan, which is 50 years into the future. Do not be pressured. Act prudently. Obtain the county attorney's written opinion. Then you will have a written record to support why you vote the way you eventually do on the SITLA PC zone application. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to comment, if I may.
Hey, go ahead. Just take your own advice.
This is Larry Witt, 580 Pat Creek Road, Spanish Valley. I just wanted to voice my support for what I think were all of the folks speaking to reject the application from SITLA. That's item J in the agenda today. I think one point that hasn't been made quite yet is the potential for a patchwork development if the entire 5,000 acres were granted as requested by SITLA, rather than having the development move in a rational way through phases of building out through the valley as it goes. So just another voice requesting rejection of the approval from SITLA. Thank you.
This is John Weis. Can you hear me? I'd be more than happy to go forward.
Go ahead, Tom.
So I don't live in San Juan County. I live in Grand County and I'm a customer of the groundwater sewer and service, service district. But I'm also a river guide. I've been on the river my entire life. I don't know anything but the Colorado River. And I've started several nonprofits to help people understand what's going on in the Colorado River. And that includes what's happening in Grand County and San Juan County. The water right for Spanish Valley Service District is 5,000 acre feet. But as far as groundwater goes, it's locked into 500 acre feet and contingent on a groundwater management plan per order of the state engineer. That 500 acre feet is certainly not capable of developing 5,000 acres. So it commits San Juan County to import water in that those places could be, for example, the aquifer in Kane Creek. It could be surface water from the Colorado River and it can even be surface water from the Green River and that would probably come from the Green River Block Water Exchange Contract with the Bureau of Reclamation. The yield of the Kane Creek Aquifer is not enough to augment supplies for the 5,000 acres. It pretty much commits San Juan County to go after water in the Colorado River Basin. And which is currently being done by Washington County and St. George, Utah. That is a 24-year project so far. It started in 1996. They've spent $32 million so far. It's been 24 years in the process and they're still undergoing federal contract water right contracts and NEPA review. And so there's a lot more time and money to be invested in this project. And then there's also the threat of litigation. So and they may not, even if they get water from the Green River, there may not be enough, well, there will not be enough natural supply. I agree with Dave Hurley. The Colorado River has been in a deficit since 1968 when Congress authorized the Central Utah, Central Arizona project. And now the deficit is 3 million and growing. So the water really doesn't exist except on. My time's up already? It seems like I just started, but anyway. To commit yourself to a lot of time and money for water that doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mac. This is Liz Thomas. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Lemos. I am a resident of Grand County, Utah, in Spanish Valley. I've lived here for many, many years and I've watched some really good development happen in Spanish Valley. And I've watched some really bad development happen in Spanish Valley. So I do appreciate SITLA's effort in trying to come up with a plan with Spanish Valley. I think that's a great step forward. But the SITLA proposal in front of the county commissioners today for approval is huge. It doesn't mean it's a bad proposal, but the, the request to approve a 5,000 acre proposal is unreasonable. And it would forever tie the hands of San Juan County down the road in case circumstances change. Like John Weis said, mentioned, what if there's not enough water? It's pretty likely there's not enough water to develop 5,000 acres there. So I just would urge you to look before you leap, think this through and proceed with caution and proceed in phases. There's no rush to approving a 5,000 acre development. There's a lot more information that needs to be gathered before the commission approves something that's huge. So I think as Sheila mentioned earlier, sooner or later, you're going to be asked to enter into a development agreement. And once that happens, your hands are tied, period. You're stuck. So I would urge you to move slowly, look at it one phase at a time. And I would urge you today to reject the proposal that's in front of you. Thank you.
May I speak?
Okay, go ahead. Announce your name and your address.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kevin Walker. I live in Spanish Valley, but on the north side of the county line, but I can see the proposed development area right outside my window. I'm also chairman of the Grand County Democratic Party and a member of the. and a member of the Grant County Planning Commission, though I'm, of course, just speaking for myself. I agree with many of the other speakers that it would be a mistake to lock the county in to a 5,000 acre development with just one vote today. It's not clear to me from the packet how much is being approved, when the development agreement is going to be signed, et cetera. But I would strongly urge the San Juan County Commission to take a phased approach. No one, no one that I'm aware of is trying to stop all developmental Sitla land. And in fact, I think many people think there are good aspects to their plan. But it's a long-term plan for a very large amount of area, 5,000 acres. And it doesn't make sense to approve the whole thing all at once without any option to change, change your hands of mind in the future. So, I agree with the suggestion that Sheila made, that the county attorney, perhaps also Sitla's attorneys, give the county a memo outlining just what the county is committing to and what their options are in the future for changing their mind. And that should happen before there's any vote on this proposal. In short, I think the proposals should definitely be phased so that the county and Sitla can continue in a cooperative way to guide the future development of the valley. I don't think it makes sense to approve the whole thing at once. And so, I think Sheila, Carolyn, Monette, and several other people made great comments. And I hope the commission will heed those. And I would think even people who think the Sitla proposal is a really great idea, even those people, I think, should be in favor of a phased development, just because it keeps the county with some influence of what's happening there and it doesn't just commit it to a development track for years in the future. In the time I have left, I just want to remark that in Spanish Valley, we have this weird situation where we live under three different jurisdictions. One of them is the south part of the valley in San Juan County. 90% of the population of Grant County lives within 10 miles of South Spanish Valley. And over 90% of the population of San Juan County lives more than 40 miles away. So, things that happen in Spanish Valley have a very large and immediate effect on people living in Grant County, almost the entire county. And we share the same night skies. We share the same aquifers. We share the same air quality. And it doesn't have much of an impact on people living in Monticello or places south of there.
That's time right there, Kevin.
Okay, so I just hope that Grant and San Juan Counties can be friendly and cooperate. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, any other public comments?
Hi, this is Jennifer Wiedenstein. Can I comment?
Okay, go ahead, Jennifer.
Great, thanks. I just wanted to, I've been listening to everyone. I just wanted to make sure you get a comment in from somebody who is a San Juan County citizen who actually lives in Spanish Valley. And I pretty much agree with much of the comments that you heard this morning. I think we need to be prudent. I think we're going to bite off more than we can chew at this point. We need to take this smaller bite. I would like to see, I would like to see Sitla take this back, the drawing board, and break it up, have more clarity, and yeah, a more defined process that doesn't just, isn't just one big sweep all the way across 5,000 acres. And that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner, Maryboy, not seeing any others wanting to make public comments. Then go ahead and close the public comment, period, and then proceed with the agenda. Commissioner Maryboy, are you there? Commissioner Gray Eyes, are you there? So, I see you on. You may have to unmute yourself, Commissioner Maryboy. Or I see Commissioner Gray Eyes is still on. You're muted. All the public comments scared nonetheless. There you go, Commissioner Gray Eyes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't seem to be getting Commissioner Maryboy. So, it looks like.
Go ahead, continue.
Yeah, if we can't get Commissioner Maryboy.
I'm here.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Maryboy.
Yeah, the phone muted me, and I've been unmuted myself back and forth. And like I said before, thank you for the public comment, and thank you, Mac. And those of you that made a comment, thank you very much. We are jogging things down as we are proceeding with our meeting. And thank you very much. And Mac, could you get us through the item number 3?
Okay, number 3 on the agenda is the consent agenda. For you today on the consent agenda, we have the meeting minutes, the check register. There's a State of Utah Coronavirus Relief Fund Local Government Allocation Agreement. And I'll explain that one. And then I'll sort of San Juan County Planning Commission Member Appointment. And I'll go over that one as well. And so, going back to the State of Utah Coronavirus Relief Fund Local Government Allocation Agreement. This is the CARES Act funds that we're going to be receiving from the State of Utah. There's a maximum amount that's listed in here. Right now, we've received the first phase, or we will be receiving the first phase after the application. The first distribution amount that the county is going to be receiving, these funds have to be spent directly related to COVID, COVID efforts. And so, the first distribution amount that we'll be receiving is $129,365. This was based off of a formula that the feds have provided to the state, and the state used our population to base the total amount. If we receive, if we were to receive the total allocation that we're eligible for, we would be receiving $2,188,000, let's see, $2,188,094 in total allocation. That may be subject to change. And so, they put that caveat in the language of the agreement, that they'll pay the one-third now, but the remaining two-thirds will be dispersed in the future, subject to availability of funding. So, we may not receive the total allocation. In the application, the money can be spent towards certain items. And where these are federal funds, they're heavily restricted on what these funds can go towards. Some of the suggestions in here have mentioned that we can allocate funds to the cities. Now, in here, Blending, Blending will receive from this first distribution $107,729. Monticello will receive $58,192. So, those two cities in San Juan County will be receiving funds. Bluff wasn't mentioned. And so, in looking at possibilities to spend that, we may come back to you with proposals of where we can spend this money. And Bluff is one of them that we have. Would like to communicate with the mayor and their council just to see impacts that they may have, or we can use these funds to help them out, as well as there's opportunities for grants, loans for businesses, things like that. So, as we bring that Economic Development Committee and finalize that last appointment today, that's one of the things that we've got to get going, and we can run a portion of the funds to that, as well as paying for supplies that the county has to help combat COVID, as well as some of our EMS, personal protective equipment, things like that. And so, there's a lot that we still have to work towards and work through on trying to figure out where we're going to spend these monies. There is the requirement to spend these monies by the latest day end of November. And so, it's going to be, it's going to have to be some quick action on our side of it. Where we haven't had a lot of cases here outside of the Navajo Reservation, we've just got to pay attention to where we've spent money, look at the things that we've spent money on here in the past, and also what we're going to spend money on in the future to help combat the COVID. Some of it is post coronavirus. What are we going to, what's it going to take after the fact? One of the things that we're also looking at is the possibility of technology here in the building so that we can try to become better suited for telecommuning, these type of meetings, things like that, so that we can actually project and have the right systems in place so that we can do it adequately enough. So, there's some analysis that needs to take place before. But this is just the application that's gone to the state to receive those funds. And later on, we'll have to decide how to spend those funds themselves. The next item, that's San Juan County Planning Commission Member Appointment. We had met as an interview panel comprised of myself, Planning Commission Chairman, the Planning Department Director, Commissioner Gray Eyes, and interviewed three candidates to fill the vacancy for the Planning Commission at-large position. And during those interviews, the finalization, we had selected Melvin D. Nelson to fill that vacancy. That term will then expire December of 2024. Melvin D. Nelson is a former Planning Commission member, so it's a reappointment. The two candidates that we had interviewed was Linda Ann Smers, as well as George Machoka Mocha here in Monticello. There are two other vacancies that we'll be trying to fill. We've advertised for it. Nobody's come forward. And so, we've reached out to try to engage some of the community members. We need one person from Blending. We've reached out to the city manager there, as well as a member from La Salle. And so, nobody has applied for those. So, if anybody's listening that's in those areas, wants to volunteer for a great opportunity to set on our Planning Commission, please submit a resume to us so that we can go through that. But other than that, that is what you have before you to pay on the consent agenda for your approval.
Do you want to proceed and read the whole agenda into the record so we can act on it?
Sure. Item number 4 on your agenda is your recognitions, presentations, and informational items. You have an obnoxious weed update from Monty. You have a county fire restriction that we'll be putting in place. And that discussion will be by David, if he's here. He may be out fighting fires. Number 5, under business action, you have the Sheriff's Office and Monticello Police Agreement for your consideration. And B on here is the bail commissioner discussion and consideration from the sheriff. Item C on here, you've got proposed water pipeline and stock troughs on Sitla lands on the Bluff bench, 3-4 miles northeast of Bluff, for your consideration. Item D, consideration of the agreement with Department of Human Services for aging and adult services for funding to provide home-delivered meals, delivery services, transportation, expansion of CM services as needed, telehealth outreach, other services related to COVID. Consideration of the agreement for COVID-19 Dream and DCP COVID Response, 2020, this will be given by Kirk. Got the consideration of the letter to rescind the Sitla easement application for the county road, D-2104 extension. We've got on item G, you need the San Juan County Economic Development Board Member Appointment. The next one, we have the Utah Office of Tourism Co-op Grant Application Letter of Support and Physical Commitment of $275,000 match from the 2021 Transit Room Tax. And then, on I, you've got subdivisions for approval. And this will be by Scott. You've got the Turkey Trot Estates Phase 1, Lot 1 Amendment. Turkey Trot Estates Phase 2, Lot 8 amended. Got Mount Pella Estates, Lot 8 amended. San Juan Estates, Phase 3, Lot 33 amended. El Rancho Estates, Subdivision Amendment Number 4. You've got the Coats, 2, subdivision amendment number 1. Item J, on here, you have the approval of the Sitla PC Zone Application and Preliminary Community Structure Plan as recommended by the Planning Commission on June 11, 2020. And then, the final item on here is the property tax rate approval. And that'll be given by John David Nelson, our auditor for the county. That there, county members, is your full agenda.
Thank you very much, Mac. And that is our working agenda here for today. And the first item that we have is the meeting minutes. I'm sure that both of the commissioners have gotten those. I got it. And we need to make a motion for approval. Motion.
So, I can motion to approve all of the consent items, unless you want to take those individually.
Ask him again.
Did you understand? So, the consent agenda is all one approval? So, it'd be the minutes, check registers, the Coronavirus Relief Fund Allocation Agreement, and the Planning Commission Member Appointment. All as one motion.
Well, go ahead and entertain a motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner. Thank you very much. Commissioner Gray Eyes makes a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Adams seconds the motion. And any questions or comment to those four items? Have been none? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Next item, Mac.
Okay, so the motion passes on there. The next item is your obnoxious weed update by Monty. Monty, are you here? Monty, can you hear us? Unmute yourself if you're there. Star 6.
Can you hear me?
Yeah. I can, go ahead.
Go ahead, Monty.
Okay. Just for your information, we received two grants, one for grant, net of $19,000. Okay. Just for your information, we received two grants, one for grant, net of $19,250. We received that from the state of Utah. Our other grant, we received for cattle corn all along the river. That grant is also for $19,250. We've been, we've been working on these, both of these grants already. We're still hoping that we get the money. Money is, it's going to be given to us as long as the state doesn't have to use any more COVID for COVID money. So that's pretty much the update that I've got.
Great.
The next item on the agenda, commissioners, is the county fire restriction letter. David, are you on here?
I am.
Okay, David, turn it over to you.
Good morning, commissioners, and Mac, and everybody that's on commission. It is that time of the year that the state has issued a null burn throughout the state and due to weather conditions and wind. The county usually mirrors that those rules, and that's what this letter is presenting to the commissioners, that the close fire season is going to be in effect as of June 12 through March 31st.
Sounds like we lost them.
No, I'm still here. No, that's just all I had.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, David and Monti. And it sounds like it's a very simple, straightforward position. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comment? If not, a motion would be in order to accept these two items.
Question. Are there's a public notice being circulated to all across the San Juan County?
Once the approval commissioner today is given for those fire restrictions, we'll definitely be putting this out to the public. So the state has already done that as well. So yes, question.
Go ahead, motion for number four, A and B.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gray Eyes. Acknowledge A and B under item four. Motion. And do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Adams. Thank you very much, sir. Any questions, comment, last minute? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, Matt, go down to business action, A, B, C, D, and guide us through.
Okay, this first one is from, well, first and second one will be presented by the sheriff. First one is the Sheriff's Office of Monticello Police City, or Monticello City. Jason, are you on?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Sheriff, we can. Thank you.
All right, Ken.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner Mac, and everybody listening. I brought it to the commission before about meeting with Monticello, about taking over their law enforcement services. And the meeting's been ongoing, and I think that we're ready to, you know, agree. They just met on their last city council meeting, and they voted to contract with us. And so the sheriff's office, I think we can provide that service. I think you have a copy of the contract, and that Appendix A is the contract cost agreement. If you guys can all see that. Basically, I'm presenting that contract for you guys to vote, and then we'd like to start July 1 and fulfilling that contract.
Okay. Kendall, our attorney, are you online?
Hey, Alex, are you there?
I don't know if he's on. I did. Kendall has reviewed that contract.
Okay. What's his take on it?
What's the total amount?
The total amount is $230,000, and that's to bring over two officers. And so right now they just have one, and then we'll work on hiring the second one. So that contract's $230,000 for five years. But also you can see on that contract, we're working into, the first three years of working in bringing their vehicles and equipment over. That's on that Appendix A attached sheet.
We have, we have Alex on the phone. If you, if you had questions for our attorney, Alex. Can you hear us, Alex?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Mary Boy, did you have questions for him?
Actually, I think, I think Torgerson kind of.
Say that again, Commissioner Mary Boy, you have a question for me?
Yeah, I was going to ask you for your review of both sides to what your, what your sense was, but I think, I think Torgerson kind of enlightened that Kendall already went through it, and he's fine with it. That's my take. And if that's the case, then I guess it's up to the commissioners to take a position on this. But in the meanwhile, Mr. Gray Eyes still on the line for some questions.
My question is, the legal review has been done. I didn't understand what the trans, translate to what?
Yes.
Yeah, so Monticello drafted the contract, and then they reviewed it, and then I had a, the county attorneys both went through it and made some changes, and submitted it back to Monticello, and they agreed with all that and put all the changes that the county attorneys wanted in on the contract.
Okay.
We had the county attorneys in on the whole entire process, all the way along, commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner Adams, would you like to take a crack at this, or would you like to make a motion?
Well, I was in one meeting with the city and the county as they negotiated this. And my understanding is if a municipality cannot provide the law enforcement, it will, by state statute, and Alex, you might want to weigh in on this, it will automatically fall to the county to provide that law enforcement. Is that correct, Alex?
That is a correct assessment. The difference between the default and this agreement is the level of services that Monticello has negotiated for. And in exchange for that level of services, they are helping to fund two additional services.
So we can, we can, we can, Commissioner Mary Boy, and we can contact with the city and provide the services, and they will pay us a lump sum, yearly lump sum, or we can provide the services and get no reimbursement for it. So it makes sense to me that the county would, because the sheriff has reviewed it and says he can do it, we provide the service with the reimbursement on the city of Monticello.
Okay. Thank you for the enlightening there, Commissioner Adams. That's what I was listening for. And we seem to be okay with it, and I think we need to lend a hand in any way that we can to make this thing work. And I just don't want to overload our sheriff department. And then again, I just don't want to leave the city of Monticello just standing there without no services in any way. So if that's the position, and I would like to have a motion to accept this particular agreement so we can move on with it.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chairman of the commission to sign the agreement with Monticello City to provide law enforcement services there.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstention? Did Commissioner Gray Eyes vote it?
Yes, he did.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, and let's continue on with the next item there, Matt.
Okay, Sheriff, on this item, here is the bail commissioner discussion and consideration.
Okay, commissioners, this next item is bail commissioners. In the past, we've had deputies get sworn in to be bail commissioners. It's to accept bail when it's needed to. We haven't had any deputies sworn in for quite a few years. And the state law says that we need to go to the executive body and get permission to then have the judge or whoever swear the county deputies in as bail commissioners. The only other issue I was going to bring up is in the law, it also says the bail commissioner needs to be bonded for $2,500. And I talked to the county attorney about this, and he called Johnny Miller at UCF, and he thought in order to meet that $2,500 bail or bond, that we could, it would just fall under my bond as a, I guess the county has a bond as elected officials. I think it's called criminal bond or something, criminal insurance. And so I just wanted to have that discussion as if that would, you know, cover it, then I would like to get it set up with you guys' approval to have some deputies sworn in to be bail commissioners again, and get that all lined out.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Any comment questions? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much. And okay, Matt, next item?
Okay, the next item is the proposed water pipeline and dock troughs on sitter lands on bluff bench, three to four miles northeast of bluff. This is for your consideration for approval. This item is going to be discussed by Nick. Nick, are you still online?
Hi, Anne. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Nick. Go ahead.
Farewell.
All right. This is a proposal by Sitla for the installation of approximately three miles of water pipeline and livestock water troughs on the bluff bench area northeast of bluff on a grazing allotment. And this is to improve water availability for livestock as well as livestock distribution and better livestock management. So this letter is a letter of support, basically stating that San Juan County supports that proposal and that it is consistent with our resource management plan.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Anybody on the line that has to impact it? Bluff community? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
God. Any opposed? I will abstain. Thank you very much. So there's two, two yea and one abstention. Next item, Matt?
Next item on your agenda is the consideration of the agreement with the Department of Human Services, Aging and Adult Services for funding to provide home-delivered meals, the meals on wheels, delivery services, etc., transportation, expansion of CM services as needed, telehealth outreach, and other services, necessary to keep high-risk individuals for, so unless COVID-19 is safe in their homes. We've been doing this throughout the county. We'll turn the turnover to Tammy. This is a connection with that.
Good morning. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so this is an added service to our aging program. The governor has worked out a plan to try and take care of the high-risk individuals that are not seniors. So these would be other high-risk individuals. And since the county already takes care of a senior population, they felt like this would be a good fit. And they're providing us money up to a certain amount until we can either spend that or not spend that, depending on if we get clients or not. But this is to help those that are high-risk for COVID. It keeps them in their homes. It allows us to provide them meals, a ride to the doctor if they need a ride to the doctor, or to the pharmacy if they need that. So it just reaches a population that is not reached out right now.
Thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Any questions or comment? Tammy, will that, will that also service those that are registered under the, under bluff and other areas which is in San Juan County to be covered on meals on wheels?
Wait, she's on mute. She's shaking her head. Yes. So yes, Commissioner, to answer your question, that will cover all of the plans that we have throughout the county.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you very much. The next item, E.
Okay, this is the consideration of the agreement for COVID-19 San Juan County Dream and DCP COVID Response 2020. This is a new contract, your consideration. I'll turn the time over to Kirk to bring it down.
Yeah, you guys can hear me okay?
We can.
Okay. Yeah, this is money from the CDC that's been given to states and directed to the Utah Department of Health for distribution to local health departments. This would be $131,000 for two years to assist with coronavirus contact tracing and case investigations. Just to give you a little background, right now, I've got four nurses that do part-time doing contact investigations. And we also have three national guardsmen who are working on this right now. And we're assisting UNHS on any cases when they feel overwhelmed. And right now, that's quite a bit. So we're, we're doing a lot of the contact tracing on the reservation, as well as in Blending and Monticello. So this would just be a two-year contract. We would, we've currently got positions open. We are planning to hire just contract-based people just for the duration of this money. And depending on if we find somebody with the right skill set that needs, that is looking for part-time or full-time, we're looking at hiring two to four people, probably at $12 to $17 an hour to assist. we're looking at hiring two to four people, probably at $12 to $17 an hour to assist to give good information to anybody that contracts this disease so that we can identify contacts and reach out to them. I think that's a good summary. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Yeah.
Right.
$131,000, is that per year?
No, that's for two years. It basically comes out to 66,000 per year. But I think that the CDC understood that we may need to ramp up upfront and hire more people in year one and less people in year two or vice versa. So I don't think there's any limit in how much we spend in one fiscal year. But it's 131,000 total over two years and the money could be used.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comment?
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I was Mr. Adams.
Thank you very much, unanimous. And the next item on the agenda, consideration of the letter to rescind the Setlaw easement application for the county road, D2104, extension, Kenneth Mary Boy, San Juan County. Commissioner Kenneth Mary Boy, you here? Yes, I am.
So on this, we provided the letter, Commissioners. So on, just to give you background, on May 19th, you approved the application for the extension of the county road, D2104, on the Setlaw lands in San Juan County. This letter that we provided for your consideration today was to rescind that recent application. I don't know if there's any further explanation that you can provide or if there is a discussion.
We'd like to go ahead and entertain a motion.
Motion to rescind the letter by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Questions, comment?
Yeah, I want to know why we're doing this.
Well, Commissioner Adams, I did support you on your motion to approve this particular letter. And later I found out that the extension and the area we're talking about is cultural sensitive. There is some areas where I feel that it's very, very traditional, sensitive areas. And that's why I shared with all of you to reconsider this before we do it because I believe that there are people out there that feel that this particular area is very, very sensitive. And there are some areas where people feel that it shouldn't be bartered with. And it extends right into the minutia.
The road's already there, Kenneth.
Yes, I know. This is to keep, maintain the road.
We're talking about individuals who are trying to make a living in the county by providing guide services and keeping people out of sensitive areas, but guide them so that they they stay on the road and do the right thing. And it's only .2 miles probably from here down to the courthouse, down to the edge of town. But I just don't understand why anybody would object to this when the road already exists there. It provides a legal easement.
You know, there's some areas in time that we've got involved into where people got in trouble. And I sure hate to see that again. And I don't believe that this this community and the people is in a position to be doing things like that. And I'm more concerned about the traditionalists and those that do their prayers in the area. And I do know that there is a road that exists there. But for so many years, it's saying like people just kind of ignored it or just didn't think it was there and it was continuing. So any other discussion, Gray Eyes?
You're right. The archaeological numbers are very high in the area. And number two is that is the county or the budget going to be involved? That's where are they going to get the money to do a two-mile road construction, road improvement? There's a difference between maintenance and road improvement. Road improvement requires other policies. So probably, I don't know about the right of way, if there is the right of way, or if it's considered. So those are the things that are still tremendously outstanding.
I just wonder if either Commissioner Mary Boy or Commissioner Gray Eyes knows where this piece of road is.
I looked at the map and going between the established route connecting to 95. I think there is a lot of routes going crisscrossing all over the place. And I don't see any, any more benefit at large. Whether it will be a single entry, somebody providing, has an enterprise business, having to develop that road to, there is a lot of disturbance that could be addressed.
This is not a new road to be built. It's a two-track road that exists there. There's no county money involved in any way. It's good to give a legal easement across Sintlans land so that people wouldn't get in trouble because they were on a two-track road that didn't have a legal easement. So there is no money involved. There's no work to be done. The two-track is already there. It's just providing for the legal easement.
Well, the last comment I like to make is that this road improvement is within the old Bayside National Monument, which is still up in the air as far as the court decision is concerned. And if we do continue to slip away rather than, that will hide us from behind, so, so to speak. It's not going to benefit the whole San Juan County or the Navajo's.
Well, this request came from a guide who guides people on tours and stays on existing roads. That's what he does for a living. This would just provide him the opportunity to use this two-track road because the county had the easement and would keep him from getting in trouble for being on the road that didn't have the county easement on it. I think that's what the request consisted of.
Well, Commissioner Gray Eyes has last questions, so that was his last question. And thank you for the comment there, Bruce. Any other last information, Mr. McDonald, before I call for the question?
No, just kind of show you where what the plan would have been. As we extended the new road into this area, we would then put in, to this day, we would request and increase our mileage for that extended area. It wouldn't be much, like he mentioned, it's a pretty small sliver, but point two would be something that we would request of our future state allocation.
Thank you. Well, if there's no more comments, then I would ask, I would call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposition? I will oppose.
I oppose.
Any abstentions? There be none? Max, what's the count?
So you have Commissioner Gray Eyes who voted for it and Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Mary Boy voted against the motion to rescind the application.
All were rescind, yeah, okay. Well, I oppose to rescind. I mean, I will rescind the letter. That's my position.
Okay, so let me understand. So the motion was to approve the letter to rescind. Commissioner Gray Eyes voted yes. So you're saying that you're also voting yes to rescind the letter?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so just as far as procedure-wise, just to make sure we get it right there. So Commissioner Gray Eyes made the motion. We didn't hear a second on the motion. So I recommend just for the clarity to make the other motion, make the motion again.
Okay, Commissioner Gray Eyes made a motion to rescind. And according to our comments, I will go ahead and second the motion to that.
Okay, then I'll re-vote again for clarity on the minutes.
Okay. All those in favor in rescinding the letter?
Aye.
All those opposed to rescind the letter?
I'm opposed.
Okay, and no abstentions for that. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is item G, San Juan County Economic Development Board Members. Natalie, you on the line?
I'm on the line. Good morning.
Good morning.
So the Economic Development Board, we had three vacancies available for the board. And so the first vacancy, we wanted to address, we posted a public notice requesting letters of interest for a Spanish Valley resident to fill the private business opening on the Economic Development Board. Based on a review of the letters of interest, we received three of them per a letter that's attached in the commission minutes. We are recommending Andrea Wilson to fill that vacancy. To highlight a couple items regarding Andrea, she's a female business owner, small business owner. She currently is the owner of an appraisal company and thus providing the background and understanding in the real estate market among her other listed organizational experiences. Again, there was a letter that was included in the county commission packet as well as I believe the other letters that were received as well. So that would be the first point of vacancy. The second vacancy we would need to decide upon is which commissioner we would like to have on the board as a representative. And then the third vacancy is for the Chamber of Commerce representative, which will be up to the chamber to decide. So it's up to the commission to decide on those first two vacancies that were.
Thank you Natalie. Appreciate the invitation. And I do believe that I have a capable, able commissioner that I pretty much seek with. My recommendation would be Commissioner Gray Eyes if he's available. And other than that, if Commissioner Adams would like to, that's what my recommendation would be.
Okay.
Commissioner Gray Eyes?
Question. Natalie, you're indicated you receive three letter of interest. I didn't really understand the rest of it. Is that three applicants or letter of interest all from Spanish Valley?
Correct. And that was based off of the conversation that we had in the previous commission after we approved the bylaws.
That's all I need. Now, are you trying to get one of the commissioners to go on this economic development board member?
Yes. Yes, we are.
What's the the workload as far as the meetings? Is that every month?
So the meeting is quarterly, but per the bylaws that were passed in a previous commission, a part of the workload and expectation of all of the board members is to participate in the planning of writing and then implementation of the rural grant, which is the main purpose of the creation and the implementation of the bylaws of this board. And so the rural county grant program is, was passed in SB 95 this past legislative session and it brings $200,000 to San Juan County specifically for the purpose of economic development. And so one of the key roles of the board members is helping with the planning and application and then implementation of that, of that grant dollar.
Okay.
I think Commissioners, after I may also add to what Natalie had mentioned, I appreciate Natalie, your presentation. As you, as we have these funds, these COVID funds, there is a sense of urgency. There is an application period we've got with a deadline. So quarterly indication of the meetings in the bylaws may have to be sped up here and meet more frequently here in the beginning where we're under a narrow window. Even if we consider spending a portion of the CARES Act funds that we receive for economic development, distributing that to for economic development, distributing that to, um, county businesses, we will need this board and that body to help, help us set up those parameters. Um, and so the meeting here initially is going to be, I would, I would have to say pretty intense. Um, we would like to, to act on its own, um, in behalf of the county, not only as an advisory, but also as a creation tool for these grants and, um, these funding possibilities. And so time, time intensive at first, um, and as we go through, then probably less frequent, but here initially it's going to be pretty busy. And we're under, we're under deadlines to not only just create, but also to school the money or award the money, I should think.
Okay.
Well, I guess, uh, quarterly tells that it's, uh, flex, flexibility for me.
Okay, well, it sounds like Commissioner Gray Eyes, um, accepts the, uh, position. So if there's no more comment or question, um, all those in favor in accepting the, uh, that particular item to appoint, uh, Mr. Gray Eyes in the position?
And Andrea as well.
Yeah.
Commissioner, this is Manette Clark. I have a comment about this.
So the comment has been already over.
If I, if I call upon my two commissioners to make comments and if I feel that I need to, uh, get an impacted area involved in it, then I will call upon the, uh, the, uh, um, public. So at this point in time, this particular position has been accepted. Um, the next, uh, before we vote, uh, Bruce, do you have any comments, questions?
No.
Okay, um, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Navnesh?
Uh, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, was there a motion?
There was a motion, yes.
You made the motion.
Yeah, yeah, and then seconded, yeah.
There is?
Yeah, and then you voted on it, yeah.
Uh, yeah, no, but, uh, the chair indicated that what my position was on and I accepted it. But I didn't hear any motion or second.
Okay, we can redo that.
For that, uh, I guess, um, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Adams. Do I have a second? I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Move on down.
Thanks for the clarity, Commissioner. The next one is the Utah Office of Tourism Co-op Grant Application Letter of Support Fiscal Commitment of $275,000 Match from the 2021 Transit Room Tax Allocation that we would rescind. Also, we as well for this free provision.
Um, thanks, Mac. Um, so I wanted to provide an overview, um, before I go into detail about the grant application of projections for 2020 is that is the budget that we'll be looking at pulling from for this 2021 request. Um, just as a note, the Utah Office of Tourism is on a fiscal year, and so this grant application is actually for our 2021 calendar year. Um, that's when we would use these funds. Um, so January through May, um, 2020, as far as what we currently collected in transient room tax comes out to around $162,815. Um, a projection, um, the rest of the year, June through December, would come out to $454,288. Um, the total projection then for 2020 would come out to $617,103. Um, as a note, that's around 49% of the TRP that was collected last year in 2019, which is around 1.2 million. Um, the projections are all based off of, um, availability of rooms, um, nights that are available, um, percent occupancy that we've been tracking with our businesses, um, during this time of COVID. Um, and then also based off of numbers that we have, um, from 2019 occupancy. Um, with those numbers, um, our request is to apply for the Utah Office of Tourism Cooperative Grant that will provide a match for, again, our 2021 next year visitor services marketing efforts. Um, the grant application allows you to apply for up to $270,000, um, which would then be matched by the state office, dollar for dollar. Um, after meeting with the Tourism Tax Advisory Board, which is comprised of San Juan County Tourism Industry Businesses, um, we received unanimous approval to move forward with this request, um, and this marketing plan, which is for $275,000. The breakdown of the budget should have been included in the letter of commitment, which was included in the agenda. Um, for a refresher, San Juan County's match would be $270,000. Again, that's out of our projected $617,000 collected in 2020. Um, the Utah Office of Tourism would match $275,000. We would be bringing a partner match of $178,000. That includes from state parks, Page, Arizona, Grand County, Garfield County, Wayne County, and Washington County. The total value project would be $728,000. Um, during this time, I'll make a note, um, of COVID, where we all had limited fundings across the state when it comes to marketing and where one of the key industries that were impacted was our visitor services and tourism industry. Uh, we find that it's even more important now to work together as partners across the state and to have a united message in that, um, in that front. And so that's why we're bringing so much partner match to this application. I don't know if there's any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners? Uh, motion would be in order. Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes?
Oh, there was a question.
The question was, uh, are we able to match all those provisions from the, uh, in accordance with the grant application?
Yeah, I, based on our projections for what we'll collect for 2020, we will be able to meet that match.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Motion, and do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner, uh, Adams. Any questions, comment, last minute? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, you're Navnesh. Thank you very much. The next item, Mac?
Next item, um, you have, let's see, six subdivisions for your approval. Um, this Walter, are you presenting? There's Scott, maybe online?
I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here, Scott. Go ahead.
Okay, so yeah, so we've got six, six subdivisions. Each of these are in Spanish Valley. Um, they've all with the installation of the water and sewer up there. These are all amendments to existing subdivisions, actually. Um, so what they are is, you know, individual lots being split into multiple lots that are smaller, um, to, that are, that our ordinance allows now with the smaller lot sizes. So I don't know if we want to go through each of them individually or how you want to do that.
Let's do.
Okay, so first off, we've got the Turkey Trot Estates Phase One, and it's, it's Lot One that is being amended to, um, Lot One was a, a one acre lot, and it's being, um, there's an existing home on one of them, and the back is being, uh, back a third of an acre is being, um, created a new Lot 1A. This is off of Rio Grande Drive in Spanish Valley. Um, so yeah, that's the basics of that one. And I did email those. I just, I just got the digital copies of those, the revisions and things that have gone through the Planning Commission. Um, I got those this morning, so I forwarded those over. I don't know if you got those or not today. To where you could look at these.
Okay. Uh, a motion would be in order, Commissioners?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Commissioner Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Any comment or question? If not, um, we're looking at item from one all the way down to six. Uh, any questions or comment on either one of them? Before I call for the vote, anybody on the line that's an impacted area? There be none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Item J?
Item J, Commissioner, um, is the approval of SITLA PC Zone Application Preliminary Community Structure Plan will be recommended by the Planning Commission on June 11th, 2020. We've got Walter Berger, our planning and zoning director, who's here to present this a little for your consideration.
Walter?
Hold on, Walter. Hold on, I'm going to see if, oh, it looks like he's coming down the hallway. Star six. Or you can present off the line if you want. It may be easier to present off the line. Can you, hold on, we're having technical difficulties here. It's like you dropped a button.
Commissioners, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very well.
Okay, what we've got before you today is an application, um, from SITLA for a, a PC zone rezone. Uh, by way of background, SITLA applied for this rezone back in December. We didn't have a meeting in December. We looked at it in January. There was a public hearing in February to discuss this issue. Then we hadn't had a meeting since that time, and then the other night on June 11th, the Planning Commission reviewed the PC zone rezone application and approved that at their meeting. So what we've got for you is an application that has been recommended by the Planning Commission for passage. And I think there's a lot of confusion about what's going on here. Um, the application is simply, the application is own, it's not approving any developments, it's not committing anything at this time other than a rezone, which would allow SITLA to then move forward in the process to propose specific development, then enter into development agreements with the county to, to move their, their projects on their property forward. But at this time, they're simply asking for a rezone, which is contemplated, anticipated in the ordinance. Their application follows the ordinance. Um, Planning Commission couldn't find a reason why they should deny it based on the application. And so they've made that appro, that, that recommendation to this board for, for your approval.
Okay, Commissioner, let me, let me add to, to, um, Walter's discussion with this. Um, recognizing that there is a lot of commute, confusion out there, I think it's just prudent to take the time to go through the process that was approved in the ordinances that were approved. And so now, hearing from some of the public comments, there is a lot of confusion and, and we do have a link on here, the applicant, who will turn some room over to speak as well. But just kind of going through the process, um, in the end, I, I think I'd recommend, uh, tabling the item, but I want to, I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page with the process. So what, what we're, the application is for, is for the Spanish Valley Planned Community District. So the people who own about, just roughly around three quarters of the property, instead of property, is already in this zone. And so we're not asking to rezone their, their zone that they're already in. It's the other zone that are not zone, PC zone, that they're asking to be put in there. And so they have the Spanish Valley Residential, so the, the SVR, the part of civil land exists in, as well as the Highway Flex Zone. Um, so SITLA is asking all of their properties to be put in to this Planned Community District. Now, as you go through the Planned Community District, the Planned Community District has steps. And it's similar to, for me in my head, is, it's like master planning a community. Um, so in their application, they're, they're looking to, to master plan the community and, and by ordinance, they have that right to do. Uh, and it takes us through these steps where you have, uh, first, the, uh, plan, let's see, I'm going to make sure that I get this right, so that, um, I've got to go back to the ordinance, so I'm going through the ordinance right now. Oh, yeah, yeah. Right now, we're on the, the PC Zone Plan Application. And in that PC Zone Plan Application, there's requirements for that plan. And SITLA has submitted the plan to us, but I don't think the plan has been thoroughly reviewed. Um, in here, it has the proposed permitted conditional uses, if there's any maximum number, so the maximum number of residential uses, the maximum square feet of non-residential uses, and a preliminary community structure plan. And so the application from SITLA takes us through that whole entire thing of what they're trying to plan for, uh, their 5,000 acres that exist, uh, throughout that area. And in there, they've broken it down into specific zones. And so in the planned, um, community zone, you're allowed to bring in other zones in there and plan the whole entire area. And so of that 5,000 acres, SITLA has proposed to do a neighborhood center, and a central development area, uh, perimeter, perimeter development areas, a flex development area, and highway commercial development areas. And if you look in their application, at their land use table, and this is kind of what I think everybody is missing, is they proposed the maximums in there already, uh, under this PC zone that would be allowable. And so what you would be pretty much approving, or should be at this, at this phase, be approving those maximum allowable potential uses in those zones as they've broken it out for their property. And so in here, you've got, um, if you look at the acres of open space, there's 2,169 acres of open space. So when the, you receive the comments of, well, you're approving a development of over 5,000 acres, well, no, 200, or 2,169 acres of that is open space. So they're not proposing to develop 100% of the 5,000 acres. Uh, they're breaking it out into these areas, these development areas. um, in their overall plan. And so in here, and nobody's touched on these things, is there's a projected maximum, um, 492 units with the potential of 670,000 square feet, uh, in the neighborhood center. And they've designated it throughout their plan, um, their application of where that neighborhood center exists. Then they've got the central, uh, development area on there. They also have the perimeter development area. Uh, and then you have the flex development area. In that flex development area, that's your, um, mainly your commercial development core, um, your commercial retail, your park, your trail, your open space, all kind of combined in there. But there's 3,910, let's see, what was it? 3 million, sorry, 3,910,000 square feet of a maximum proposed just for that flex development area. And so when you hear the comments, well, we need to phase this. Well, they've broken it down into different phases, different areas within their plan. Um, similar with our highway commercial, you have 1,130,000 square feet of commercial that's just within that highway commercial area. So overall, for me, when I went through this process, the process is, um, first, the PC Zone Plan with their maximums and kind of what they foresee and where they foresee the developments taking place throughout. Um, the next portion of that process takes us into the community structure plan. And now this has to come back to the commission. It goes before the planning commission, but it also comes back to the commissioners because this is where you start to work on the development plan. So in this first step, when you hear comments, well, there's not enough water in this area. We completely understand, um, where those are coming from. In this second step, in the community structure plan, the applicant has to come back to us, uh, with those uses a little bit further defined, as well as, uh, the definitions of their infrastructure, uh, their phased approach, their water, um, you know, if they are planning on, say, for example, and then this is extreme case, a golf course. So don't, nobody use that because that's not what they're proposing. But a golf course is a high water use. And so in that second approach, they're going to have to come back to us under that community structure plan and tell us how much water that golf course is going to take and where they're going to get this water. And so they've got to have a communication with, um, the special service district there on the water and sewer, how much water is available for the uses that they are proposing. But all of that is in the next step. It's not in this first, um, this first PC Zone Plan. Now, let's just hypothetically say that, uh, through the process, we don't, we don't accept their, their zone application, uh, to change everything to the PC Zone. The inverse of that is, is kind of worse. What it, what it does is through this PC Zone, there's community and county, um, work that takes place back and forth. There's some negotiation that takes place. If you're looking for smaller phasing, um, slower pace, we can work on that, uh, through this next step. But if you were to keep the zones as they are, say, say they just go ahead and, and want to do a development under the Spanish Valley Residential that they already exist in, uh, or better yet, the Highway Flex Zone. If SITLA wants to come in under the Highway Flex Zone, you have no regulation authority if they comply with the existing zoning that they're already in. So what they're asking is to bring all their properties under this process that they can be vetted, they can be, they can go through, um, the open meetings, so nothing's um, behind closed doors. Whereas in the other zones, they would, especially at that Highway Flex Zone, they would, if they comply with a zone, whatever they propose in that zone, doesn't necessarily have to come back to the commissioners through a public process. Uh, there's, and, and this is kind of the difficulty and, and kind of the conundrum that we're in right now with the ordinances themselves. Um, in the Spanish Valley Residential, it significantly has this water requirement that they've got to be able to demonstrate with the proposed, um, units that are within that zone, they've got to be able to demonstrate that they have enough water. In the Highway Flex Zone, that language is not there. So they can propose, like I said, the golf course, uh, in that area, um, and not really have to account to anybody on the water. By bringing it under this PC Zone Plan, it gives them, the applicant, the allowance to go through and kind of create the structure. Uh, to me, when I was reading through this last night, I kept on thinking about playing poker. You have five cards and you want them to reveal their entire hand. Well, this is what this does. Through this planned community approach, uh, they reveal their whole entire plan. And then we're also able to go back with them and negotiate a phased approach. We're able to negotiate any infrastructure issues. If there's any concerns that the community has, they can be presented at that time, once the uses are a little bit further defined. But I think it's important to, to go back and relook at their application because I don't think anybody taken a hard look at these things long and what they're proposing in those different regions and those different zones. Zone in our ordinance, um, back under that PC Zone for approval. And so I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners are reading through this correctly and that you're looking at it, um, from the way that I think the, the zoning ordinance was written and supposed to be approached, is first you get, uh, this main application in that kind of goes over, um, their overall intended uses, the maximums that will be allowed. It does, and, and this is by ordinance, and this is something we can't really take away because it was approved in the ordinance. So in my head, that's the law. Um, they are vested after you approve them at the PC Zone Plan. Um, it doesn't mean they're vested before. It means they're vested afterwards. But there's, with the Highway Flex, the Spanish Valley Residential, there's no vesting indication, so, um, they could be vested at the time of application. It's, it's kind of nebulous, poorly written. Um, but that kind of gives you a little bit better, uh, summary. And so the reason that I'm asking and recommending that you table this, and I'll turn some time over to, to Lisa, to, to weigh in on, on this from the applicant side, if I, if I may, but I want to make sure that everybody's looking at their application and, um, making sure that they're, they're breaking down kind of, um, those proposed square footages, floor area. So when I look at this, they've complied exactly with the ordinance, what the ordinance requires them to submit on their application. Um, and so I wish that we had an opportunity for a work meeting because this would have been work, perfect for a work session to go through it. But I think we're kind of all new to this new process. And because of that, there's some confusion. Me, I'm, I'm willing to meet, uh, after hours with, with Spanish Valley residents and, and go through how I'm interpreting this and how we're seeing this. We'll also get the attorney to weigh in on kind of the legal framework. Um, when you look at a development agreement, there's a lot of us, you know, that have experience at doing development agreements uh, here in this county. And so it's not necessarily a fear of the development agreement. But this is, kind of like people say, this 5,000 acres, it's a lot. But the fact that they're coming in and wanting all the properties to be a planned community and put into planned community zone, I like that better than staying, having them stay within the zones that they're already approved in. The PC Zone gives us more opportunity to vet. It gives us more opportunity to also work with SITLA through the process. It also gives them the requirement uh, to make sure that they have the proper infrastructure, the proper water for those things that they are recommending in their proposal. So it gives us a little bit more flexibility as, um, kind of oversight through that, that area. Um, with that, commissioners, if I may, I'd like to turn it, turn the time over to the applicant. If she has anything she wants to clarify on, or if you have any questions for her as well. Elise, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I can. Thank you.
Well, thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you. And, um, I'm sorry I can't see you in person. But maybe one of these days that will be able to happen again for all of us. Um, to just briefly summarize, I appreciate Max's introduction and, and his explanation of everything. Uh, he did a much better job than I can do. Um, the, the one comment that I will offer to you is that the process that the commission approved back in November, I believe it was, in the Spanish Valley zoning ordinances. And the process that we're asking to work under is a very thorough and, um, lengthy, uh, process. We're willing to undertake that. And we're at step one now of that full process. The preliminary community structure plan that was attached with the application is to provide you with a high-level vision of the project. And the final comment that I will make is the, um, maximum numbers that are shown that would be vested. Almost every development that I've been experienced with, you never reach your maximum. It's always much less than maximum. This is an ideal world when you calculate what it is you're asking for. But at the end of the day, the ground conditions, water conditions, other conditions, market conditions, you typically do not receive that full, you do not achieve the full number of whether it's units or square feet that you've asked for. Um, so depending on your perspective, it's the most optimistic or it's the largest numbers that, that would be, that you're, you're being asked for to be approved are the, the very limit. But not only the very limit, they're unlikely to be achieved. And with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions that, um, the commissioners may have that I can try to answer. And thank you for your time.
Um, before we do that, let you stop the motion for discussion. Discussion only. Um, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Adams. Do I have a second? Commissioner Gray Eyes.
Commissioner Gray Eyes, you're on mute on there. Okay, there you go.
Okay. Somebody feels fooling around with my phone.
Are you gonna, you're gonna?
I, I tell you, I tell you, uh, I tell you, it's, um, Mr. McDonald. Anyway. Well, for the right. Go ahead and I would make a motion to, uh, but anyway, you open up for discussion, so I'll just second that.
Yes, it's, uh, I, I did. And now we do have a first and a second. Discussion is recommended by the chair, but, uh, if the commissioner feels otherwise, you do have a right to, um, make that motion in any way you want. So with this, um, now we're open for discussions. Any comments or questions, commissioners?
Well, um, being done, I'd like to entertain a motion. The chair.
Okay, Commissioner Gray Eyes would like to entertain a motion.
Would like to go ahead and, uh, uh, disapprove this proposal. In addition to that, defer the whole matter back to the, uh, um, Spanish Valley to get a better view, understanding as, as I understood. Um, a lot of misunderstanding is being, um, going into this, uh, matter. So I'd like to defer that back to the, uh, Spanish Valley, uh, zoning, I mean, planning committee. Get a better understanding. And then go forward with it to, um, whatever processes required. That would be my motion.
The motion is being made by, uh, with the recommendation by, by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Do I have a second to that motion?
So, Ken, I have, um, our attorney here on the phone as well. I don't know if you got him here. He's asked to, um, to clarify the motion. Commissioner Gray?
I disapprove this proposal. The fact that there's indication that misunderstanding all the way through the process has been determined. And then with that understanding, refer that back to Spanish Valley Planning Committee. So they can um, receive a, uh, a clarification as to the intent of the proposal.
So could that be achieved by just tabling it for two weeks and letting?
Well, um, we could request for a short written memo from the county attorney sent after SITLA proposed prior to the vote. Anything having to do with SITLA applications and any other county or county attorney would have summarized the issue of the commission and the public in the short legal memo. Um, to me, this would vary complex proposal to the, uh, absolute or no reason, or any member of the public can hope to understand without a, a, a summary, uh, memo. Um, that would be my thought.
Commissioner, I'd be happy to, to do that. Um, if, if that's what the commissioner would like, I would be happy to do that. It won't be, it likely won't be short. Um, but we will certainly put it in as simp, simple and basic terms as, as possible, just to make it clear for the general public. Um, and, but I, I think that could be done by tabling it for two weeks rather than sending it back to the, to the planning commission.
I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Substitute motion by Commissioner Adams. This will supersede whatsoever being recommended or requested or motioned.
I'd like to move that we table this, uh, table any action on this item until a future mission meeting.
On any substitute motion, there is no comment or question on that supersedes everything. So do I have a sec? Oh, oh. On this, um, substitute motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
He's checking that.
What was that, sir?
The table in motion, who's checking that?
On the, uh, on the substitute motion, you really don't have to have a second to a motion because that supersedes everything. So now the, uh, the tabling motion by Commissioner Adam is amended motion for two weeks.
Okay.
All right. Sounds like Commissioner Gray Eyes fully understands. A substitute motion has been, has been requested for. All those in favor and the substitute motion?
Aye.
Going once? Going twice? Substitute motion fails. Is there any other recommendations or any other motions in place?
Commissioner Gray Eyes, if I may. So you're recommending denial of the application on there. I think we would need to state why we're denying the application, just for clarity. And is it, you had taken back to this Spanish Valley Commission? Are you, are you stating that we should take this back to the Planning Commission? Because the Planning Commission has already, they've already?
For, for a better understanding, I did not deny, I just disapprove.
Okay.
The proposal.
Okay.
Disapproval is different than denying.
Correct.
Number one. Number two, I said, refer this back to the Spanish Valley Planning Board. Let them get a better education because I heard misunderstanding, miscommunication. There is, there is public comments that were provided that indicate an opposed 5,000 acre of land that is not satisfactory to the group there. Therefore, they would like to have a praise in height, which Mr. Adams, Mr. McDonald indicated. And I think because of that, I'd like to have everybody on the same level of understanding rather than having people interject off the line in the process and saying things that are controversial to what the intent of the whole process should be.
Yeah, completely. I agree. And I think, Commissioner, if I may, there's, there's not a Spanish Valley Commission or Committee that's been established by, by you as Commissioners. There's Spanish Valley residents, there's Pat Creek residents who have been vocal through the process, but not as set committee or commission. One of the, one of the things that we could do on here, kind of like our attorney had proposed, is if we table this item altogether and work on it for better, better clarity, better understanding, where it's a new process that we're going through. So we can meet with the community, have open dialogues with them. So everybody's kind of seeing from the county staff perspective on here. See if there's still issues with this step in ordinance. Because remember, all we're doing is following the ordinance. And with that, there are going to be concerns even in the end. But I think we need to make sure that everybody's clear on the application that's being proposed and the entire process. By tabling this, it helps us get through that. I wish there was a formal committee, but there's not. It's, it would be making me taking it back through an open process to better understand the ordinance and the setup. But having our attorney also help map that out, does that make a little bit more sense by doing it that way? So like you say, it's not a denial of the application. By tabling it, you put it on pause so that we can go through that. Because even, even one, and that's why I took the time to explain it after, after Walter had given his presentation. Because it's, this is the first application that we've received under this process. By tabling it, it gets, it helps everybody wrap their head around this process and what's left to come in the future with it. Does that make sense?
We have a motion and a second, and we are in the discussion. Impacted area, anybody would like to weigh on this?
I have a question, Commissioners, if it's open to a public question.
I call upon you.
Okay, please state your name as well.
This is Liz Thomas, and I'm a resident of Spanish Valley, although on the Grand County side. And I, just so that we're all clear, because I think there's a whole lot of confusion going on. Would a, would a motion, would a vote to table this issue automatically bring the issue back in two weeks? Or would it bring it back in four weeks when the county attorneys had a chance to, you know, write a memo so it's more clear for the public and the Commission to understand? What does a table, what would a vote to table this mean?
Kind of exactly that, Liz. If I, yeah, it would be tabling it for, I don't know if, depending on everybody's analysis of it, whether it be two weeks that we can get it back, if we can get it back that fast. But also if we're performing public outreach on here as well through the process, it may take a little bit longer than the two weeks. A two-week meeting for me is meaning that we've got to have everything ready for board packets next week. And so really, there's only a week in between the meetings. And so realistically, you're looking at later on in July.
And thank you, Mr. McDonald. I think that helps because that was exactly, I just, everybody can get everything. Like the attorneys can get a memo out, people can understand it, there can be discussions. And maybe, you know, maybe you're planning on doing more community discussions on this because it's such a big issue. But I think there's not a specific date that it has to come back, and there will be plenty of public notice. That might be helpful to residents as well as the entire Commission.
Yeah, I agree.
Based on, Mr. Chair? Go ahead. Okay, I will go ahead and amend my motion to table this matter and put a timeline for the second meeting in July. That'll give you enough time to do all the research, make recommendations and so forth. That would be my motion.
Thank you very much. The same motion is being presented by Commissioner Gray Eyes as Mr. Commissioner Adams did. But with the, with the timeframe and the directive. So amended motion supersedes everything, no discretion or nothing at this point. So I will call for the question, all those in favor and voting for the amended motion.
Chairman Mary Boy, excuse me. This is Carolyn Daly. I was not, I was not able to unmute my phone when you asked for comments from people in the impacted area. And I just wanted to request, would it be possible to have a formal public hearing held in Spanish Valley itself? Where Mr. McDonald can explain the details of this and people can make comment? Just to formalize it a little bit in the timeline?
Just with me, myself?
Well, whoever, but to have it, you offered to come.
Yes.
To have a public, an actual public hearing on it.
Either that or we can do a Zoom meeting. Yeah, either one.
That's right. Well, we could do a Zoom public hearing.
I, I allowed this, I allowed this because of the malfunction of the muting. Otherwise, amended motion is being held by Commissioner Gray Eyes. Anything that you wish or request will be on his lap to present that as we vote on it. So therefore, we heard the comments from an individual. Thank you very much. And Commissioner Gray Eyes, would you like to make a comment to that or accept the request from the individual?
I accept.
Okay. Was that letters of being recommended by, by the individual from the impacted area and, and holding the motion, Commissioner Gray Eyes? Now, again, the amended motion is being presented. Now we need to entertain it. All those in favor and amended motion?
Aye.
I'd like to make a comment.
I request for a comment several times when we're voting. You don't questions or anything, but I will allow, Commissioner Adams.
Well, I just wonder when the Planning Commission's going to meet again. If we set a timeline that, that doesn't meet with the Planning Commission's schedule, this is gonna, this is not gonna work.
Amended motion allows, amended motion allows to timeframe and also the recommendations as we vote afterward. Then that will be compiled to Commissioner, I mean, Mr. McDonald, and he will sort that out with the attorneys and set a date and timeframe and who they would like to be at the, at the discussion for this particular items. Well, that was Mr. McDonald.
Mr.?
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Without further confusing the situation, you are set to make those arrangements after we vote on this, right?
So, yeah, we can work with the attorney to get that legal opinion on everything. And then we can set up time to meet with Spanish Valley residents there in the meeting.
And the date.
And, yeah, the middle of July is that meeting, correct?
That answer your question, Commissioner Adams?
Sure.
All right. Well, all those in favor on voting on the amended motion?
Aye.
Okay, aye. Inamnis, thank you very much. Take it back to the folks and, and get your permission ready and, and get the timeframe and date. Everything all set out. Thank you very much. Last item, property tax rate approval. John David Nelson, Commissioner Gray Eyes and I are getting ready to be on the NRF Board meeting at 1:30. So let's see if we can wrap this up as soon as possible.
Okay, Commissioners, we're at that time of year again where, where it's the, the Commission's job to approve a, a tax rate for, for this year. And previously, we had held a truth and taxation hearing where a tax increase was, was recommended. And then earlier this year, the Commission decided not to go through with that. And so what I've emailed you is a kind of a breakdown of, of the report of tax rate by the, by the state, by the Bay Tax Commission and, and comparison with the tax rate from, from last year with its, with its revenue. Did you, did you have any question?
Motion for accepting the report? Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, do I have a second?
Commissioner, we need to set the rate. The requested rate overall for the county is .003544. So the, we have to have that rate approved into today in a, in a Commission meeting.
We're, we're just setting, making a motion to accept a report and after that, a discussion and also an action will be taken, either support or not. So at this point in time, Commissioner Gray Eyes makes a motion and do I have a second? For the discussion? Going once? Going twice? I will make the, I will make a second, so, so are they here, Commissioners?
I went on mute there. You had a second, Commissioner, Commissioner Adams here. For some reason, my phone hit, or my computer went mute on there.
All right.
Questions, Mr. Nielsen?
Yes.
You have, do you have a recommended rate?
I, I would just recommend to go with what the state recommends. That, that rate is a little lower than last year's rate, and that's due to an increase in, in overall property values. And it doesn't, and it doesn't, it doesn't include the, the tax increase that was previously talked about and...
Okay. The rate would be in concert with the state issue recommended to?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Any other questions, comment? Presenter, any other, any other comment?
I, I don't have any other comments. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer, but...
Okay. Any other questions or comment, Commissioners?
Other question?
This is a...
Other question has been raised.
Must be on mute.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The comment I wanted to make before we voted, I, I tried to do it.
I'm here. Go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
I just, I was trying to figure out whether, whether this was any, this, John David, you said this was the tax rate was less than it was last year?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor?
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Gray Eyes, second by Commissioner Adams. And so far, I will also vote yes. So three, inamnis, thank you very much. Commissioner, I mean, Administrator, the next item on the agenda we have is, I don't think it called... uh, I don't think it calls for any, uh, report on, on, on our agenda. Um, we have, uh, a timeframe for the, uh, U N S. So, the commissioner, would you like to make a, a report? All right.
Good.
I've been, um, several meetings with C I B, training and U S P and, uh, U N S, maintaining some of the, like, gubernatorial, um, presentations on Zoom and, um, we'll be doing the same the rest of this week. That's all I've got to report.
You know, uh, with all the things happening and what's going on and, um, Commissioner Adams has been very, very active in, uh, attending those meetings, I'd like to thank you for that, uh, Bruce, and, um, doing a good job and just to recognize that, uh, you are doing such a wonderful thing for our communities here in San Juan County. Um, Commissioner Gray Eyes, do you have any, uh, comment or report?
Yes, um, at the last meeting, uh, we did, um, hear from, uh, uh, a presentation, I mean, on the naming of the art, so I tabled it and, uh, tried to get a feedback from the public. Um, I, I haven't received any thus far. The other one is the, uh, information received that B L M is proposing to, uh, um, lease sale oil and gas, um, along the Green River, I guess, Kenning Country and Green River District. Um, so those are, uh, available information on the internet, so. The other one is proposed by Mesia Uranium Tailing Plant, uh, foreign spent ore that will be sent to Mesia Plant to further process and squeeze the last ounce of ore, uranium ore out of that tailing and to where they can store all kinds, all those tonnage of, uh, spent fuel, if you question. Otherwise, the, uh, while, while they're doing that, the, um, cooperated lining in those, uh, catchment pool stores oxidation tanks or, uh, the liquid, uh, contaminated liquids are, as you probably understand, is infiltrating into the, uh, into the ground. Possibly some years down the road, he was rich, he, uh, Mesia Aquifer. Seven generations from here probably reached plus Utah. So in that sense, uh, we need to some do something and, uh, eliminate, uh, hopefully by that type of a contamination. The other one is, uh, public hearing that was done by, this was sent to me by Jake Garfield's, Utah Association of Counties, uh, Mr. Rob Bishop is, uh, uh, discussing or getting information on the, uh, Land Water Conservation Funds. It was established in 1965. And, uh, Mr. Bishop is, uh, um, playing, uh, they're supposed to be for certain things, but for certain B L M or federal agency or departments that are utilizing this chunk of money to purchase land for their own, uh, operation. So of course it's open also to, uh, conservation, uh, organization. I don't know to what extent they are participating. We had an inquiry back, uh, two years ago on this, uh, Land Water Conservation Fund. And we required it and they say, yeah, it's still open, it's available. So those are my, uh, uh, report. Otherwise, uh, the rolling through that is, uh, the other, uh, information that I received. So that's the, my understanding. Thank you very much for the time and, uh, I will, uh, go ahead and sign off because of the, uh, the corn days meeting for the next meeting that we have. Uh, now the whole revitalization fund. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's, uh, 1:37 and, uh, I will probably do my report until the next, um, uh, commission meeting, but however, thank you very much for participating in our, uh, in our meeting. It is very important. I know that, uh, each and every one of us is impacted in some way or another. And, uh, please, uh, take care and, uh, be safe. And I don't know how long this is gonna be, but, um, it is getting more frustrating every day that, uh, we have to be confined in our own home, uh, day after day. And we try to reach out and be part of the other meetings as much as we can to, uh, further, um, assisting the county. So however, all of you that has participated, thank you very much and please be safe, have a good day and a motion to adjourn would be in favor, Commissioner Adams?
Motion adjourned.
And I believe it, I was second. Commissioner Gray Eyes, all those in favor in adjourn?